All this meeting to order. Flag of allegiance. Flag of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic where we stand. One nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
Make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. Reorganization of the board. Alright, do I have a motion to certify the April eighth, two thousand twenty-five unofficial election results? Of the school board, um, for the school board members?
I'll make a motion to certify the April eighth, two thousand twenty-five unofficial election results for the Mexico School District number fifty-nine school board members.
Second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. Have a motion to dissolve the current Board of Education for reorganization.
I'll make a motion to dissolve the current Board of Education for reorganization.
Second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. Our temporary chair is Dr. Lentz.
This time, I am seeking nominations for school board president.
I nominate Jessica Eckren to be-
We're going to, wait, black presentation. Or is that wrong?
Yeah.
But I think we need to call the meeting, the meeting to order, right?
You have to, you have to present me so I can retire. You have to swear in the new member before you can reorganize the board. You've got it.
We're not organized right now, obviously.
I have to retire. So you can bring the new board member on.
So we need to honor you first.
Okay.
She says-
Thanks. Yeah, lift that hair. Alright. You gonna do it or you don't need to?
I'll let you do it.
You're the temporary chair. Alright, Nicole.
I delegate.
Hi.
Since we're so disorganized.
Getting full camera view. Thank you, thank you. Tonight, we want to take a moment to recognize and thank Nicole John for her six years of dedicated service. She started in two thousand nineteen. And today is her last day here. Serving two full terms is no small commitment, as we all know. We are grateful for your time, your energy, and the heart that you've invested in our students, in our staff, and our school. Nicole, your leadership has played an important role supporting our schools, and your service will leave a lasting impact. On behalf of the entire district and the entire board, thank you for your service, your support, your dedication to public education.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Lentz.
Thank you. Mr. Kelly, this is a great board. We're blessed to work with some really great people, and it's been a period, I opened six years, but I wouldn't trade it at all. And I'm very glad we're giving back to my alma mater in the way I was able to. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Before we open up for nominations for president, probably should swear in our new school board, new school board member.
Well, you guys are swearing again, yeah.
So I'm looking for stuff and waiting for it.
Okay, you guys ready? And me? Hey, I state your name.
Hi, John Kellen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of school director.
Discharge the duties of school director.
In and for the Mexico School District number fifty-nine.
In and for the Mexico School District number fifty-nine.
That's a long one. County of Audrain.
County of Audrain.
State of Missouri.
State of Missouri.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
According to law.
According to law.
Welcome.
Yep.
Thank you.
We're gonna have to get John up on the computer.
I have it up on my iPad right now.
Oh, do you really? Okay, he's prepared. Thank you, John. Over to you.
I got a little ahead of myself there earlier, I was too excited with my own power, so.
You didn't have this.
I didn't have it, it's probably a good thing. So at this time, we are seeking nominations for president of the school board.
I'd like to nominate Jessica Eckren to be president of the Mexico Board of Education.
Second.
Are there any other nominations for school board, our school board president? Seeing none, we'll close nominations. Believe we shouldn't have a roll call over here.
Yeah. Don't go with him, boys.
Scott?
Yes.
Yes. Chris?
Yes.
Lynette?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Yes.
I abstain.
I gladly yield the floor perfect to you, Mrs. President.
I think we should have passed the gavel.
Yeah.
Symbol.
You don't hit him, is it?
Yeah.
Alright. Do I have nominations for the twenty-five, twenty-six vice president?
I'll make a nomination, nominate Michelle Stevens.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Alright, we'll take a vote.
Okay, Jessica?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Michelle? Chris?
Yes.
Lynette?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero one. Moving on to treasurer, do I have a nomination for the twenty-five, twenty-six treasurer seat?
Make the nomination to, um, Matt Pilcher as the treasurer for the twenty-five, twenty-six treasurers.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other nominations?
Jessica?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Lynette?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Matt?
Abstain.
Motion carries six zero one. Welcome new VP and welcome new treasurer.
Thank you.
The next one's hard.
I know. Uh, nominations for the twenty-five, twenty-six secretary?
Making the nomination for-
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other nominations?
Jessica?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Lynette?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Matt?
Motion carries seven zero. Welcome back, Katie. Congratulations, you've got the hardest job. Alright, do I have nominations for the twenty-five, twenty-six MSBA delegate?
I'll make a-
Should I do them, I think we have to do them separately.
I'm gonna nominate Lynette Brown for the delegate position.
Second. Any other nominations? We'll go to vote.
Jessica?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Lynette?
Abstain.
John?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero one. And do I have a nomination for the twenty-five, twenty-six MSBA alternate delegate?
We'll nominate Scott Nichols for the alternate. I'll second that.
Any other nominees? We'll go to vote.
Jessica?
Yes.
Jessica? Michelle?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Lynette?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero one. Onto public comment. Have you received any public comment, Katie? Moving on to the president's comments, um, the April Employees of the Month. Um, is this new that each employee receives from central office a certificate? Bulldog swag and a one hundred dollar CD? Is that new or is that? It's always been like that?
Just this year.
A few months.
Okay. I guess maybe that, yeah, that's really-
I don't think it was written out.
Yeah. It's good to know. Um, our certified staff employee of the month is Drew Woodman, teacher at Mexico Education Center. His nominating colleague shared, Drew is an outstanding individual that always puts his students first. He always treats students as individuals because he knows that each student has individual needs that need to be met daily. His understanding of this concept makes him an asset to the Mexico Education Center. M E C is lucky to have him working with our U. Congratulations to Drew. Um, well, the support staff employee of the month is Sarah Bradley. She is cafeteria manager at the Mexico Middle School. Her nominating colleague shared, Sarah is always an outgoing person, always respectful to staff and students. She works hard to make sure everything is done and done correctly. She always has a smile and a friendly hello. Congratulations to Sarah. Does anybody have anything they want to share? I think I forgot that last month.
And congratulate the candidates on their election. And to the teachers and administrators out there, just know that we support you guys a hundred percent. And we know that you guys are working hard out there. I know it doesn't seem like you get the support that you deserve, so just want to say that.
Anybody else?
I want to say thank you from Eugene Field PTO for the schools who, I know you guys had to keep track also getting money and everything for Daddy Daughter Date Night. I think the girls really enjoyed themselves, so thank you for, especially your front office staff of McMillan, Hawthorne, and Eugene Field. It was a very good, successful night.
I'll second that. You got time.
There you go.
You got time.
Alright. Onto consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I guess I should ask, did anybody have any questions before we move on with it?
I would like to just make one comment that I'm excited to see the web. Web orientation part of it. I have heard many success stories with the Bling crew, so to get that started sooner and welcome them into the middle school is a pretty big deal.
Thank you.
Uh, we don't have any further questions, um, we'll go to vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. Is there anything that you needed to point out?
I don't think anyone has specific questions.
Okay. Alright, moving on to item seven, approval of the rules that require extensions. Do I have a motion for one?
I'll make a motion to approve ACH zero one two three eight one to Mom and Teen and Coin for eight thousand nine hundred three dollars and eight cents. Uh, ACH zero one two three 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 K Z O K W W R for four hundred dollars. And check number one four two one five zero to the YMCA for six thousand twenty dollars and twenty-three cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, we've got two extensions, all in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries five zero two. Do I have a motion for number two?
I'll make a motion to approve check number one four two zero six one to the City of Mexico for one thousand four hundred ninety-six dollars and seventy-two cents. Check number one four two one zero three to the City of Mexico for eight thousand one hundred ten dollars and sixty-five cents.
Second.
I've got one extension, um, all in favor, please raise your hand. You abstaining?
No, it was Central Bank on there, I don't see it online, I'm sorry.
No, it's number three. Okay, okay.
I moved it to the third.
Okay, okay, sorry. So motion carries six, six zero one, that's okay, I just don't want to, I didn't see-
Sorry to confuse you.
No, it didn't come up on here, I didn't see it, so it was maybe just-
It's on number three, okay. Um, do I have a motion for number three?
I'll make a motion to approve ACH zero one two three four eight to Central Bank for fifty-four thousand four hundred eighty-nine dollars and seven cents. And ACH zero one two three one four to Amher, Missouri for sixteen thousand five hundred twenty dollars and twenty-three cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Scott, second. I've got two extensions, all in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries five zero two. Reports and presentations, Dr. Lentz?
Uh, community engagement, uh, continue to work with the usual suspects, I'll say it like that, I guess, and with affection. Our next CSAT meeting will be May first, um, we'll be looking for a different location than, than the high school sports flags. Um, but at that meeting, we'll review the results of the community survey, we'll look at our APR together with that group, and then we'll begin to draft some revisions for the CSAT. Like to have a revised CSAT plan to present to the board in, in June. Uh, facilities, right now, we're advertising bids for the tennis court project. Pre-bid meeting will be held at eleven AM on Tuesday, April twenty-ninth. Bids are due at one PM Tuesday, May thirteenth, board would consider bids in the May board meeting. I don't, one thing that's been kind of soft or unclear throughout this process is location of a water line and whether there's an easement. Uh, as of today, uh, we know there's a water line that runs through there, but as of today, there's no easement that anybody can find. So if, if that were to hold, we would not have to pay to move the water. So that would bring, uh, close to a hundred thousand dollars back into the project. So I am hoping that that holds, but it's been, been a little, you know?
Who determines that?
Some lack of clarity. I think, um, I'd hate to be, I think the title company is where most of that work, most of that work would be held.
So at that point, if, if there is no easement, what would the plan be?
Uh, we, I guess we would build it if there's a problem, they would have to resolve it without
Okay.
disturbing, like we don't, they wouldn't have the, and I don't really even, no, the, the other question is why can't we just cap it? And there's no good answer for it, because no one can determine what that water line feeds. We know it runs through there. We don't know exactly where it ends up going, because we're, we're not certain that it feeds the baseball field.
So if it's, if there's no easement, is that our decision to cap it?
Um-
Or does it still fall with the-
Yeah, I guess like, so what happens if it, if it bursts and there's water pouring out and it's a road in the hillside? Who goes, I think that, I think the more questions we can generate prior to that decision, the more we can do research, like an animal for Ryan. But, like I say, I wouldn't, he said, don't take it to the bank, but right now, we can't, we can't see that you have to move that water line.
Is there any kind of survey done?
Yeah, there's been a number of surveys done on that site.
They didn't pop up at all on it?
There's been a lot of things that have kind of popped up, and then conflicting and contradictory information on-
Yeah, I remember the previous conversations on it, and typically, if it doesn't run to a water meter, it's privately owned, we can do what we want.
Yeah. Making sure that American Water Company and everybody else is on the same page of that, that the goal here.
I just, I, I never heard in other board meetings if American Water Company ever gave the sign off or what their official stance on it was.
Right. I think we're still-
So no word yet?
I think the challenge was prove that you have an easement on it, and I don't think that they've been able-
Yeah, if it's not with the title company, then we own it, right, so.
That was the position of our engineers at about two o'clock today. But it was, you know, takes good change.
Yeah.
Uh, stay tuned, I suppose. Work to move forward, forward with the roofing and HVAC jobs, we, we have new HVAC units on top of Eugene Field, so there's the, the promise that we made to the community in part, we're, we're getting there. Um, softball field is moving forward on schedule, I was on site today, the completion date is June sixth. They're, they're confident they can meet that, the material, um, they're not having, having problems procuring that. And I hate that we're looking at a change order that you didn't get presented earlier, but in order to get the material, if we wanted to turf it, we would have to let them know tomorrow. Um, so that hillside has kind of been unresolved. Right now, the direction that we lean in is to remove that fence that's at the top. Um, and then you just have the fence below, they're gonna have to bring that, that fence out anyway for, for some time. If it was turfed, uh, I think it would be kind of a fun place to watch a game. It's gonna be a place that's gonna get a lot of foul balls. I suppose it makes, uh, I don't know if it makes the park a little more pitcher friendly or, or hitter friendly, I think maybe you can stay alive longer and foul them out. Because it's gonna make the field of play just a little bit smaller, but, but that hillside's pretty awkward anyway. A lot of utilities run through the hillsides that limits what, what can be done over there. I think in some communities I've worked in, they would have said, you can't keep it mowed, spray it with some sort of three, three hundred sixty-five herbicide. I don't know if that's the community standards here, and people want things to look nice. My fear is if we try to, try to mow it, it'll be something that gets left till the end and gets mowed right before the first softball game, and we have grass clippings that are everywhere, because it'll be, it'll be a tough spot to mow. So I wrote this on Friday, and I got the numbers today, and, uh, we'll talk about that when we, we get to it in, in new business, but basically, they could, they kept using riprap, and when I pictured riprap, I, I think of like giant boulders like at the river, but there, this is like three to six inch rock. Think there'll be a lot of foul balls over there, I think kids will be scrambling to get it, be a good place to twist an ankle if it's rock. But I also feel like this is, like there's seven or eight of us trying to figure out how to remodel a bathroom, and so all of us would come to it, you know, oh, I like this countertop better than this countertop, and, and the cost and all that. I would note that the premium offering on our, on our bonds generated a million dollars more than what we anticipated, so there's a little bit of revenue that, that's better than what was budgeted. Um, and so far, the bids are coming in, in good shape. I, I don't know if, if it's a decision to be made with, I mean, finances are important to everything, but I think, I think you can afford whatever, whatever you decided that you wanted. I haven't known about pre-k for, for staff members, and we'll, we'll have a chance to talk about this more, but, uh, the survey went out, had eighteen people say that they would, that it would be helpful to them, then we started looking at four-year-olds, um, we felt like that might be a good place to start. Full day for three-year-olds, I know people have to have someplace for their kids, but a full day of preschool for three-year-olds, it's gonna be a long day for, for little kids. So I'm talking to Ann and Casey, and Ann had hip surgery, and Casey teaches a, a class at Westminster on Tuesday nights that doesn't always fall in board meeting nights, but it did tonight. So workshopping it together, we kind of came up with this as a recommendation, beginning twenty-five, twenty-six, employees in Mexico Public Schools may enroll their, uh, children in full-day preschool program. That full-day preschool program, we operate exclusively to Mexico, Mexico Public School employees. Um, and then started getting into the integrating, we asked that the children be four by July thirty-first, so that you can plan accordingly. Children can be dropped off at seven thirty AM, that's earlier than what we allow other people to, but if we're doing it for school people, we need to make sure that they can get to work on that contracted. Must be picked up by three thirty, that's a little bit longer day. Ask that they make the decision by, by June first, twenty twenty-five. And then the preschool would only operate on days that students in Mexico Public Schools are in session, so days when there's professional development or teacher in service. We still want our, our, uh, milky staff to be able to, to get professional development, and, and staff would have to make other arrangements. At this time, the program would likely require eight slots. Um, and this, going through this helped me get a better understanding of, of our current offerings. We offer approximately a hundred halftime slots, and forty-five of those slots are funded through federal Title I funds, and we don't think we can reserve those for specific people. Um, so we want to make sure we protect, protect that, make sure, it's also an opportunity to talk about how important those federal Title I funds are to our community, they help us support preschool. Feel like it would be appropriate to add a non-certificated staff member who can help with those expanded hours and that coverage in the middle of the day. Then, of course, they would be able to find jobs for the other person to, to do during the day. That's, that's where our conversation was around that. Feel like it's a good idea, feel like it's a good way that we can plant our flag and say that we want Mexico to be a good place to, to teach and, and work. Finance side, the first part is, is not anything real new, but now, now the salary schedule and the contracts have been issued. And we're probably scheduled to spend thirty point four million dollars next year, that'd be higher than the previous year, because that's just how inflation works. One thing to keep in mind is next year, uh, we won't get any S R three COVID relief funds, this was the last year that we pulled some of that down, so we'll have a, a significant decrease in federal revenues, but those were, uh, COVID relief funds for historically unique situation. Uh, those, those funds help build up reserve balances, so, you know, to get to our board policy regarding, uh, our fund balances, which was to keep it between twenty and thirty percent, this would be the beginning of a spin-down. And then we haven't really talked about our debt service or our capital improvement budget, but now that we've issued these bonds in April, we know what our payment schedule will be next year. And we'll, we'll have expenditures a little over two point three billion dollars. Our debt service levy, taxpayers here, paid about eighty-six cents per hundred dollars of assessed value. That brings in more than that, but there's also balloon payments built into our schedule, so we'll have years where we have bigger payments, and that brings down that balance. So the goal is, you can't build up your debt service, uh, fund balance, if you're not using the bailout debt, you should give it back to the taxpayers. So it looks awkward this year, that will bring in a little bit more, but we have years ahead of us, and we have some big principal payments, and we'll have the fund balance to cover those. Another place, uh, you know, this year, if you're just looking at revenue received and expenditures collected, it would look like, man, we did really, really well, we brought in a whole lot of money compared to what we spent. But we have a little bit of COVID relief money, and we got, you know, twenty-two million dollars in bond. So, you know, we're not gonna spend all that in this fiscal year. Next year will be the reverse, because we won't bring in that twenty million dollars of bond issued, but we'll be spending it out. So our debt service, our capital improvement, uh, fund, the fund for, will be really upside down, but by design. Uh, and then, that'll extend it to the fiscal year after that, twenty-six, twenty-seven, that's when we'll probably get, you know, some pretty heavy payments on the high school renovations and the renovations at Heart Career Center. Wish I had better news to report here, but we're still, you know, superintendents are gonna, we're gonna go into meetings and talking. Sometimes we don't get actionable items out of it, uh, but we're still having conversations about a new, new conference, there's ten schools that are involved. There was some desire to wait until after the board election and, and see, you know, because everybody's onboarding new board members, some people had bond issues, and they didn't want to have a conversation that might distract the community from, from their bond projects. We're optimistic that after that happened, we'll be able to make, make an announcement, but I think there's still some conversations taking place in communities with the boards. But I think there's still some conversations taking place in communities with the boards and, you know, if you were in the, uh, Tri-County Conference, it's gotta be better to make you leave. If you're in the Clarence Canning Conference, it's gotta be something better to make you wanna leave and join something new. So I really, really hope that something will fall in place.
Does it have to be a ten-team conference?
So I don't think it does, but there's a lot of, you know, I don't wanna really speak for other schools too much in an open forum, but like, does Macon join unless Centralia joins? And does Hallsville leave if Southern Boone doesn't leave? So I don't think it has to, but the, but the unique combination and the needs of people, there's no eight-school conference right now that doesn't involve somebody not bringing their plus one. And I think we're, we're really, really firm or could be firm at nine, except for people going to their boards and saying, we can make this happen, get to attend school and then when it's wishy-washy about whether we have ten. But that's not what I talk to my board about. I might need another month. In my mind, if we came together and we had nine schools, we'd have four schools asking us to join in May. But if you're making, do you wanna step away from where you are? Then maybe an epic conference if Centralia doesn't come along, but Larry, Larry Oaks joins. And then that, that's a different Friday night experience for your kids. So everybody comes to it with their own, their own lens, their own, their own wishlist, so to speak. So I,
Is there a goal to try and get this conference solidified at a time?
Right. So, you know, Ryan Richardson is the athletic director at Hallsville and he was at Harrisburg when they put together a new conference. And so we, we often listen to what he has to say. And says, gets really, and so much of it resolves, revolves around football. So if you don't have things nailed down by May, maybe June at the latest, it makes it really difficult. Cause now we're way out in the future here, but to put together like the twenty-seven, twenty-eight football schedule. Cause these things roll out two years in a row. So I think we're getting close to the time where any conversation could end up being more like a twenty, twenty-nine, twenty-ninth, but, and then just the can gets kicked. So, this has been an up and down thing for me too. I was pretty sure I was gonna come back and have different, something different to share tonight. I don't really talk a lot. Board meetings often about what's going on in Jeff City because there's just so many ideas that get discussed at the Capitol and you don't know what's gonna come through. So why really get too caught up in it? But, um, open enrollment is in the Senate. I think that the conditions in the Senate are different this year than they've been in the past. I think it, so I think it could come to a vote. In an open enrollment situation, a kid that goes to Centralia could come to Mexico. A kid that lives in Mexico could go to Centralia under certain conditions. Uh, one condition being that though, under this version of the bill, local school boards still get to choose whether we're gonna take kids that don't live here. So you could still say, no, Mexico fifty-nine is for kids whose parents pay taxes in Mexico fifty-nine. So that's, that's the first big provision. Uh, the current provision here is that the parents would have to transport their kid to the school. If I live in Centralia, I want my kid to go to, to Mexico. Or I live in, uh, North Calway District, I want my kid to go to Mexico. Right now, they're saying that districts could have some selection process. I think this could be, could, could, uh, present some difficulties in court. And one of them could be like, if, if we feel like it's gonna cost too much to educate your child, like your kid has a special education need, that you wanna, you wanna come here because you know we have a really good special education program, but you have to have these supports that would prove to be very expensive. That maybe districts could say, we, we won't take you. It seems like you could set a district up for a disability, uh, discrimination lawsuit. Everybody has to adopt a policy, whether you, whether you're in or out. Under this one, athletes would have to sit out for a year following a transfer. There's been different iterations of, of, uh, of this. And then only one transfer a year is allowed. So I think, I think if they get it through, eventually they'll take out, they'll, they'll remove the language about whether the districts have a choice to participate or not. So, cause I, my gut tells me that at a certain level, people like their, like local control and we like our school district and we live in this town. We wanted our kids to go to school with kids from that town. We would live in that town. We live in this town. We have our, our boundaries and I don't know that a lot of locally elected school boards are gonna vote to take kids from neighboring districts whose parents don't help foot the bill. That's
It's about charging tuition. I, right now,
Right now, we can, you can charge. Except I think our district policies, we don't allow that.
No, we went over it. We do charge.
We, we charge, do we charge tuition? I know we charge tuition at Heart Career Center.
I think you went over it two meetings ago.
But does that,
Yeah, we wouldn't charge tuition.
So that's open? Then you can't?
Right. Under this, if we let them in.
They're for free.
Right.
Are they for free? Like their state money doesn't come with them?
Yeah, their state money. So the idea is we're gonna fund the student, not the system. So we would count their, that child for ADA. And I would, you get into a lot of ideological discussions here. If we were a state where, where the state picked up the majority of the expensive kids' education, like most of the other states in the country, it would make a little more sense to me, but Missouri is, is so heavily dependent on local property taxes. Like we're, we're out of the group norms compared to other states in the country. Like it's really on the local community more here than other places. So you, you, you would get, like we get six thousand dollars per kid a year for the foundation formula. But it costs us more than six thousand dollars a kid to, to educate a kid. And so most of that comes from, you know, that, that check that everybody loves to write into silver. So this definitely changes. In my mind, it changes the relationship between the, the community and the school quite a bit, but it's, they've been able to get through in most of our neighboring states and there'll continue to be pressure in Missouri probably until they do get it through.
And they say they, they can't play any sports, any sports for a year? Is that what they're saying?
What's that?
They can't play any sports for a year?
That's what this version says.
Which is crazy for high school.
Yeah.
But if they, if they let them play sports, then it becomes,
Yeah.
It would really become the Wild West. It would be like college even more than it is now.
Like the greater St. Louis area?
Yeah. I've mentioned many schools that start with D's since this is gonna be on the Youtubes.
Just a little sour.
I think I should wrap it up, but I say this, I do think that, that there's, I would say there's better fifty, better than fifty percent chance that the seven of you all have to decide whether or not Mexico will take kids from other districts. And that would be sometime in the fall. La- last legislative session, they all got to fighting about some landfill in peculiar Missouri and they didn't get anything done for the, like, whole last month of legislative session. Which there's some advantages to that. I don't think that's gonna happen this year. Let's definitely stop talking. And let Julie take it from here.
All right. Uh, we've been making many progress with our math curriculum review. It's coming to a climax. Um, we've had piloting of the first program, Eureka Math Square, already took place two weeks ago. And then teachers last week and this week as well are piloting Bridges in Mathematics. Both of those programs are two out of seven that we started with and we dwindled down based on our research and observations. Uh, we had sixteen teachers at the elementary buildings participate in piloting both programs and then to gather feedback from those sixteen teachers. Our instructional coaches have created a survey specific to those programs to get feedback from the teachers who actually taught the units of instruction. And then we have another survey to administer to all of the other teachers who learned about those programs indirectly based on our math team of teachers teaching them about it. We're looking forward to getting together at the end of April. I think it's actually April thirtieth that we will reconvene our team. We'll look at the survey results for both the teachers who piloted and those who didn't. And we will talk about our experiences, um, with piloting ourselves. And we'll make a decision on which program to purchase. And I'll be coming to you in another month with, uh, requests for some money for that. It's very exciting though. Yes, well, yes. Uh, I think I had mentioned to you towards the beginning of the year that we had around thirty teachers participating in, in a training called Letters. And that stands for Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling. It is a super intensive training program. It's like taking several credit hours of college classes. Um, we are having the facilitator, she's a literacy coach from the Heart of Missouri RPDC, come to us. She's come to us four different PD days this year, plus an after-school work session that we just wrapped up last week. We had several teachers stay after that voluntarily to finish up some work for the program. It's very intensive. They spend hours and hours of their own time in this program. Very impressed with the teachers who have been able to stick with it over the year. Uh, we'll have year two of the program next year, again during our professional development days. And they were actually, I was at an RSP training today, which I'll talk about next. But at that training, the same literacy coach talked about offering stipend reimbursements for teachers who are currently participating and that was new for us. Previously they had said, no, they didn't have the money for that, but now they have some, they've scrounged up some money. We're looking forward to applying for some reimbursement to be able to pay those teachers for their time of participating in that program.
Did they have to pay for the program itself?
No. It was free. They, when DESI pushes out an initiative that they expect schools to abide by, and this is the Read, Lead, Exceed program or initiatives on program, uh, they provide free training. So through the Heart of Missouri RPDC, that's a professional development center. They're responsible for training our teachers in several different capacities. But if it's their initiative, then they offer training.
But they're just not compensated?
They're not compensated. All right. Um, so next on the reading success plans. I, I feel like I talk about the same thing every month, but it's just ongoing work. Um, our teachers and our instructional coaches have put in a tremendous number of hours working on RSPs. Um, it's for children who are below grade level in any specific domain of reading, according to the diagnostics that we administer three times a year. Um, if they are below grade level, then they go on an RSP or intervention plan for that specific area. They have a goal. We progress monitor teachers and put the data, um, make sure that we're making progress for every child that's on a plan. So we went to training number three of three today and, um, learned some new information. We'll roll out. Uh, we've developed our plan all year. I presented that to you a few months ago. And we made some tweaks to that today based on some new information we received. It just seems like it's ever evolving. We'll wrap up the year with sending out a final parent communication about their child's progress throughout the year and if they were on an RSP. And, um, we have to finish out the year with the core data cycle in June, reporting information to DESI that they request. District assessment, we're in full swing. It's the end of the year. Map testing, EOC testing, they start next week in all buildings, except McMillan, of course, they're too young for that. Um, but then once map and EOC testing finishes, then Eugene Field and Hawthorne will be administering their third round of iReady diagnostic and the literacy tasks and the dyslexia screening and all of the things that are required by the state that we assess and report about. And all of that information that we determine whether a kid needs an RSP or not. So it all ties together. Uh, we have really worked hard on fine-tuning our plan for administering iReady diagnostic at the elementary level. Prior to this diagnostic, it's just been, um, we give, we had given the teachers a window and said, go test your kids. Here's your window. Just get it done sometime during that window. And that window is usually about three weeks long. Uh, but I, I really worked with our team on developing a specific plan. You're gonna test on this day at this time in this grade level, similar to how we administer the map test. And basically I just want kids and, and teachers to be able to take it more seriously, because we make a lot of decisions based on the results of these iReady diagnostics, including putting a kid on an RSP or not. And once you get on an RSP, it is next to impossible to get off of one. So I really want us to, to put an emphasis on this testing. And I, I, we do testing overload, but it's required and it's important that we know how our kids are doing. And it's mostly important that we are showing growth, right? Uh, I read on Facebook, you know, it's not about the telling the kid they can't read or they're behind or they're below grade level. It's fine-tuning, like details, where is their skill deficit and how are we monitoring that and, and improving upon that? We did our monthly culture walk at Eugene Field. It was our last one of the school year. We got to visit, uh, first grade classroom, second grade classroom and saw part of a library lesson, which was pretty cool. We got to see reading instruction in both the first and secondary classrooms. So we showed off our ninety-five percent groups, um, phonics program. And it was cool for the secondary administrators and the directors to get to see that. I've been doing a lot of observations on it and it's, it's astounding how well the teachers and the students are, they're just engaged. And you can just see the light bulbs going off. It's very exciting. Um, we had, we got to see the librarian administering a, uh, digital arts lesson, which was pretty interesting. It wasn't just, hey, pick out a book, go read. You know, librarians actually facilitate lessons and kids were learning. They were doing some kind of self-expression collage on their Chromebook with some graphic arts program. Even at, I think it was, they were fourth graders. Jen, what grade was your kid in? For fourth grade? Yes, it was fourth grade. Sorry, Jen. We always finish up our culture walks with compliment, writing compliment cards for each of the teachers that we interview, telling them the great things that we saw while we were in their classrooms. We appreciate, appreciate the teachers very much inviting us in and welcoming us in. It's kinda daunting to see, you know, a team of ten-ish administrators walk in and just stand around watching you interact with your kids and it puts the pressure on. And our teachers have just, they've, they've been great. They've been great. So, uh, one thing I didn't put in my report, but it just dawned on me is summer school. Um, registration's in full swing. We opened that out on, uh, April first, I believe. Um, Deanna, my assistant, has been spearheading the enrollment process. Uh, so she has a Google form that the te, the parents fill out to enroll their kid. It comes to us on a spreadsheet. And then she enters them into Infinite Campus into that, uh, login site year for summer school. Right now, we're sitting at five hundred and thirteen enrollments so far. So we're doing okay.
What's your typical?
I don't know.
Sounds like a lot to me.
I'll have more information for you next month, Jessica. I just thought five hundred and thirteen sounds pretty good.
I thought it sounds like a lot. So. Yeah. All right. Thank you. All right. Building reports. Um, I don't know, anybody here wanna report anything? We appreciate your reports. We read them. If you wanna step up and say anything, you always can.
So I appreciate the building reports. I will say, some of the numbers are very troubling to me. Like I'm looking at the middle school with basically sixty percent of our kids are below level. And I keep saying attendance, 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 and we wanna reward attendance. We wanna reward attendance. Well, we've got ninety percent plus attendance and it doesn't seem to be helping. So why do we not reward kids for their grades as well? Like why are we not, we say rewarding people will get them to come to, to school. Well, why don't you give them some reward to do well in school? You know, I know there's studies that say, you know, come to school, you'll be better, but there's also lots of studies that say advanced kids, if they're not pushed, they don't go to school. So, you know, I just wanna throw that out there as something maybe we can consider because it's, you know, it's frustrating when you see kids who make, who struggle in school and make bad grades, get all this stuff. And then you see kids who make straight A's barely get recognized. who struggle in school and make bad grades, get all this stuff, and then you see kids who make straight A's barely get recognized. You know, and that's, to me, maybe that's something we can consider, y'all can consider.
Yeah, and I'm sure there's things that we do to recognize academic achievement, we can probably highlight the things that we do, and we can probably spend some time talking about it more.
I can give you an example.
Yeah.
For academic, or for going to school, they get to go out and they get to go get fast food restaurants.
Yeah.
They don't get that for academics, they get a certificate.
Right.
Now, for a kid, what do you think matters more to them?
Yeah.
So, it's just ideas that are out there. Cause I see the numbers, and I'm like, how can we inspire these kids besides just come to school? Cause if that was the whole case, we wouldn't be in, we got ninety percent attendance plus, we wouldn't have sixty percent falling behind. It was just, so, just my two cents, so. Something we can think about, cause I see kids that do well academically, who, who end up struggling, because we don't have some programs here that really push them. I mean, I've dealt with it myself, my own child, you know. Luckily, you know, so there were teachers and stuff that tried to push them, but once we got to like middle school, it was, you know, I'd just come home and be like, yeah, okay. So, just a different thought. Dude, I'd see the same thing, on one hand, it's, oh, we got attendance, and then the next thing is like, oh, but our data is, so.
Appreciate that, Mal.
Thanks.
Communications report, Mercy, anything you wanna point out? All good. Anybody questions? Moving on to unfinished business. Do you wanna talk more about the preschool?
Yeah, I think we'd be ready to move forward with this, I think we could. Let you guys know that we, that's the direction we go, if you wanted to have a vote on it. Yeah, that'd be something the board could say we, we supported this. Like, hear some thoughts on, full-time for, for four-year-olds, as long as they're, you know, four by, four by the deadline. We feel like that's something we could pull off this year.
And how many, with the survey, did you say are possible?
There were eighteen that expressed interest, eight of them were.
Would be eligible.
Would be, would be, we feel like it'd take about eight slots for, for four-year-olds.
Can we find a location for this?
Yeah, they would just be in the, we're still kinda workshopping, do they, do those, eight teacher kids or school employee kids stay in the same room all day, or do we sprinkle them out? And I don't know if we really landed on that, and I don't know if we think it makes, I don't know if it's something that we feel like we have to decide before we go forward.
So are they gonna be doing the same thing in the morning as in the evening, does that kinda come up in discussion at all?
I think there'd probably be some, some repetition, so it, yeah. The advantage would be, if you put eight in the same class, but if the classes are fifteen, then, you know, there's gonna be kids that aren't in full day. So I think there's probably some areas to improve it, but we're also, I feel like the primary need they're trying to meet here is childcare for employees.
Right.
And there would probably be a little bit of give and take, as far as.
I mean, we used to do half-day, full-day kindergarten.
Right.
Way back when, it seemed to work out, but, it's been a minute, but, as one of those candidates who refused to talk as a kid. But I mean, I guess that's my concern is, I know it's kind of a daycare thing, but.
Right.
If we're gonna bring on an extra person, have some kind of course plan to, especially if you're not gonna open up another room.
Yeah, and I don't know that, we don't have another room to open up.
One thing too, you're gonna look at too repetitive, is the kids is gonna have to go to second year. They're gonna get repetitive, because they're gonna come in with new kids, and they're gonna be repeating some of the other stuff, too. So, that's gonna be with my son. And when I talk with the teacher about it, I'm hoping that she would push him a little bit more. And maybe give him something a little bit more, if he already can write his, you know, his first letter or whatever, and some nuts and stuff. But you're gonna have repetitive, just with those kids that's going to second year half-day.
Yeah, I guess if we're gonna add a person, I just, I thought it'd be best to bring it up now before we just vote on it and end up with, you know, cause, kinda Chris's point of, you get kids in there, mom, dad in the building, or in another building, they've been there all day doing the same thing, you know. Everyone knows how four or five-year-olds act when they get bored, right? I, I don't wanna get a year, you know. Yeah, I don't, I don't wanna get a year down the road and be like, this is the worst decision ever, cause we didn't, we weren't able to keep them engaged.
Right.
So I just didn't know what conversations you had had with.
Yeah, and, you know, we've had, this has just been a thought for a month, so I think the preschool teachers and, and administrators can probably continue to refine it as we go. But I think if we're gonna do it, we've probably gotta let people know pretty soon, cause people would have to make decisions about what they're, what they're gonna do with their kid.
And you said you wanted notification by June fifteenth?
Yeah, I think we'd wanna have, I think anytime we try to set, I'd ask people to put questions around that.
So do you want like a loose motion, so you can move forward with it, and then come up with more details for next month?
Yeah, I think, I think at a certain point, I think we just turn it over to the principals and the teachers to do the best they can. Differentiate in the classroom if they have kids that have been there during the day.
They can start medical school.
They could.
Did you check with any of the teachers that's been, that their kids have been there all day? What have they done the whole year?
I didn't ask. Yeah, so in some ways, we're already.
You're already doing.
There's some sort of solutions to some of these problems, or if not solutions, responses already.
Say, my daughter did it.
Yeah.
And she wasn't bored in the afternoon, or maybe they did, she did the same thing. My son also.
Were they in the same, she was in the same class too?
She actually was in, it was Molly Clark's room in the morning, and then went to, she was a, it was slightly different for her, a typical peer in the early childhood classroom. And I guess in the special ed classroom for the early childhood setting, so she was a typical peer in that classroom too. But it was the same curriculum, morning and afternoon, and she enjoyed it. They just provided other opportunities, like in the afternoon, she was more of a, she'd gone through it, more of a helper for the others than anything else, and she also learned, she never complained.
And you're with a different group of kids, so they're, a different group of kids, so there's different interactions through the day.
And then with the, two different teachers that allowed her to hear it two different ways, but also so that it increased the engagement. Good feedback.
Yeah. Thank you guys for considering that, cause I know your school is the one that's gonna be impacted, so.
Alright, do I have a motion?
I don't need to, I don't need to word it.
Yeah, I wish I would've gotten my word to Katie a little faster.
I mean, I think we're probably all.
As outlined in the superintendent's report, I guess, could be one way to shorthand it.
What do you have a motion for? To know that we're gonna be moving forward with it, the details will be hammered out by next month, but to give them the, the heads up, that, yeah.
Yeah, it's come, and I, and I do think there's, there's an opportunity cost here, because you are taking probably eight slots away from, potentially from community members, because we're, we're not in a priority placement for a full day, that's.
I would, I would hope with that, that we would have discussed last month, but that those, the three-year-olds that were accepted early, those would be some of the first ones that were potentially taken out. If this were to happen, or not accepted, I don't know, I would put that, but.
I'm just questioning why we need a motion. In all the years I've done this, when situationalities comes up, we just say, go ahead, and then come to us with your final, you know, whatever. Cause once you make a motion, you're kinda legally saying, it's on you, and then we're legally tied to that as well. Whereas, a lot of times, we just said, you have our approval to go forward in the process, and when you have something for a motion on. But it's a, you know, I just, that's why I was asking, because I'm like.
So we could, we can just make a general motion to, to move forward with interest in a, a full-time preschool.
We're gonna let, we're gonna let teachers send their kids to school, all teachers send their kids to school full day, for their four-year-olds.
And then come with final details before the board, for final approval.
Yeah, I think it could be, the headline could be, Mexico Board approves full-day kindergarten, or full-day preschool for employees.
Is that the motion you're making?
You make a motion to do that, then we're basically voting to do that. We just don't know the details.
Yeah.
That's what you're wanting to do.
Yeah, and I would say there's a lot of details they get.
It's hard to say.
That, that's where I get worried about, the, the I got you moment next month, when it's like, oh, this is actually more than just hiring one person. It's like you said, you're giving up eight seats in the afternoon, essentially. What, you know, that's where I'm trying to understand the scope with the third person, what all they're gonna be doing. It's not just the boredom aspect, it's the room aspect, that last month, they said we didn't have any room for them, so we're not adding seats, we're losing seats, essentially. I think it's a great idea, I just, like, it's one of those, if we could come up with a solution next month for, I'd like to add eight seats versus lose eight seats.
Yeah, I, I would say that there's a capacity just in physical space.
Yeah.
With, without there being, we, we only have as many classrooms as we have.
But those eight seats are already gonna go, are already gonna be in there, say morning, but it's just afternoon that would be affected.
But typically, another subset of kids from the community would be filling those seats.
Yeah, there's the potential that eight kids would not have any preschool.
Right.
They could've had a half-day, there's the potential they won't have any preschool, because we locked down seats for, full day for.
In the past four or five years, have we turned down preschool?
Yes, yes.
I think there is a waitlist for preschool.
That's my concern, is, there's always a waitlist, there's always full.
But not for four-year-olds, right? Isn't that the three-year-olds that we usually have a waitlist for?
I think that's what Ann said last month, was that, a lot of it was for the three-year-olds, that they weren't accepting it early for that second year, that they take the more.
So for.
Children that need it.
You're saying you have a hundred, let's just say you have a hundred kids.
That's, that's roughly what we have right now, a hundred in the morning, a hundred in the afternoon.
Just for me, to make it clear, right? Okay, so you have a hundred kids, you wanna take eight of those spots and give it to district teachers, basically.
Yeah, and that's a, that's a guess based off of our survey that that's.
So what do we hire, what are we hiring another person for, cause you and I need more students? And how much are we hiring that person for, for an hour? Cause when I look at this, it's basically like, we need somebody for this hour.
We're looking for help in the morning, cause we're, we're opening up earlier than we do for anybody else at the afternoon. And that, that soft spot in the morning, in the middle between the two sessions. And there would be, there's plenty of work to do at Melk, there's a little bit of a, they, they could find some support that they're looking for.
For full day.
For, for, for full day.
This would be a teacher.
No, not, we're not, yeah, that's, that's not a certified position. Not a certified staff member.
So is there any, I mean, is, I'd say, is there any way in the gym or anywhere where you'd take the full-time teacher students off in a different class, I guess is where I'm going. And then leave those eight seats or whatever, open in the afternoon for community members. And have them do some other lesson plan with your third, with your third teacher. Cause you need them in the morning, you need them at lunch, you wanna keep them employed all day, and there's, you know, other stuff. That's kinda what, that's where I was kinda confused with the, the wording of it, is what they were doing in the afternoon with the kids.
Right.
So, if there was no room, I'm, I'm.
Yeah, they, they'll keep the person busy, for sure.
So basically, the morning and the afternoon, they would be a, an aid for all the different classrooms, that would help wherever's needed.
Yeah, and the, the, the space that we would use, as far as like the location, that they would be held would be in the, the pre-K commons. But that gets used throughout the day, but that's the, the best place to have them in the middle.
I mean, is there, if, if you don't need it till June first, is there a reason we can't just not, you know, come to the board meeting next month with a full-fledged motion with the costs associated to it, and yea or nay there?
Yeah, we could, we could, I can take the questions here, we can keep workshopping it.
Basically, that's gonna give, uh.
Not very much time.
A week and six days.
Right.
Yeah.
My take is, I mean, we wanna get as many kids in there as soon as possible, obviously. But if retention and recruitment is a huge thing that everybody wants to try to solve, I think this is a, this is the whole point for doing this.
Right.
Is to get that added benefit for being a teacher in the district. So I'm on board with it, I think it's a good idea.
I agree.
I think that, that, that way, you know, is that, but I, I mean, the details.
That was the purpose.
Yeah, yeah.
The spirit of it was, we gotta do something to support our teachers, this is something that we can do to give back our teachers. Where everybody in the district has an opportunity to have a full-day pre-K.
So to me, if, if we tell you tonight, yes, this sounds great, give us the details, you've already reached out to those teachers that are interested for next year, you've given the opportunity for all the teachers in the district to voice their opinion. Maybe it could be a, hey, we're looking at moving forward with this, we don't have nothing set in store yet, but be prepared for that. So that way, if it is a short window, they're ready to, to act on it, if that's the case. But that way, next month, you can come with, hey, this is the dollar amount we're thinking of with this person, or this is the exact setup that everybody's coming to conclusion of.
So the questions I would work on is, you know, the concerns about repetitiveness of, of curriculum. The cost of the additional staff. That more specifics about what that additional staff room would do during that time. Am I missing anything besides, besides those three?
You know, I think the flows from the, for you.
What's that?
I think the flow of how the day works and how it, that's a little in the weeds for our, for what we need to be doing.
Yeah.
Let's worry about the repetitiveness and more, if there's a, I know it's been a short window since the last time we had it, so we can have a little more time, if there was a way to, like I said, to keep the eight seats open and still do full-time, you know. I'm not saying there is, I'm just saying, give, give.
In my mind, there's probably not a way to guarantee that, well, in my mind, that's probably the reason why we have held off on this.
Let's do another addition. Just joking.
What's that, another addition? Well, yeah, and I could go off, on a, on a tangent about, I, I wish the state supported early childhood education like they support. I wish they would let us add pre-K students and count them for forming the payments. But the state doesn't support, like, we could build the space, but we don't have the money to staff the extra teachers. And the state doesn't reimburse for it.
And this may be an issue just this year, and those eight may change their mind, next year there may be zero, so we may gain all those eight extra seats back.
Yeah, it's gonna, it'll be in having flow, I think, I think.
To me, if you're good with doing that, I think that's what we do. Get information next month, oh, for, they should already be prepared, and they can make their decision in those twelve days or whatever.
Yeah, but it, it's a big leap of faith to walk away from daycare situation that you.
Yeah.
If, if you have your kids in daycare and it works, and you've got a slot, you wanna be pretty rock solid that I've got a, a full day that's gonna be there for me.
Well, that wouldn't change, for them, that wouldn't change till August.
Right.
So they would, it would have to be twelve days, it would be a few months.
Right.
That, that a parent would be able to have.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll keep working on it.
Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah.
You sure?
I am. Thanks for concerns about my comfort, though.
Such a diva. Uh, new business, softball.
Yeah.
Do you wanna discuss that?
Talk through it, I guess.
A little more.
You guys, what questions do you have?
So the rock size you were talking about, are we talking like the size of the Emmett in you?
No.
Ball field end?
Like three to six inch rocks.
You're talking about ditch rock, is what you're talking about, right?
So it won't look nice?
I always think when.
No, will it look nice? Will it look nice?
No.
It won't look nice and it's unsafe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're gonna have kids that are gonna go down there and try to climb and.
And trying to catch foul balls, and you're not looking out.
Well, that's what I was trying to figure out, when you were like, we could rock it, like, is it nice, pretty rock, or is it like, it's gonna be an eyesore?
I was thinking about the Emmett.
The Emmett, that's why I was like, people sit on.
Maybe we could do something nice.
Yeah, that's why I was like, okay, people sit on that.
I don't think that's, the proposal here is three to six foot, or three to six inch gravel.
Oh.
Yeah, no one's gonna say that on that.
Then never mind, that's gross.
If it's called rip rap.
What do you think?
Well, that wasn't included in the message I received earlier.
Yeah, that was probably shorthand.
Yeah, so I mean, my mind's going wild, I'm like, this could look nice. Never mind.
And there's no way to build a, a deck, I mean, I know you were joking earlier, but a deck. And there's no way to build a, a deck, I mean, I know you were joking earlier, but a deck along there or.
Yeah, I, I made the same joke with the engineer, and, and they don't, they, they don't like that idea, or they. It's not currently anything they've developed or spec-ed out, and as far as changing anything in the hillside, it's. The power supply for the lights and the, the water line that runs down to the spigot makes it to where you probably don't wanna open up the hillside too much, or drill down into it. These are the three options that they feel like we could do today, um. And if you, if you don't, and if you don't choose, you're probably choosing to keep it as grass.
I like option two, personally.
I think, I mean.
I think it could be a neat feature, I think it can make.
I like the seating option of it.
Yeah.
I mean, there's not gonna be anything in the way to keep you from sitting there, is the way I, I saw it, right?
What'd you say? Yeah, what he's saying, there's not gonna be anything that keeps you from sitting there, there's limited seating there for softball.
That's where I thought maybe it'd be a good spot for bleachers, but, kinda like you're saying, a deck with bleachers or something, but if we don't have the. Like, I guess that can come later, but I'd hate to put that over a forty thousand dollar turf, too.
Right.
But maybe it could be a general.
It could be generally.
Can it be something, could it be something that our construction crew could build some bleachers?
And, I mean, if we're gonna do it, if we're gonna do turf, I think it's something you leave, kinda like Mizzou's general admission, just let them bring towels and lay out there. But I just want, you know.
I know, but that's thirty-nine thousand dollars too, the turf.
The decking's not gonna be much cheaper though.
Well, nothing changed here, the field didn't change, right, these people, these engineers, we paid hundreds of thousand dollars, came out here, walked this field. They designed it, they did all this, we didn't increase the size, the land didn't change, so who dropped the ball is what I wanna be, because this, this should have been seen, in my opinion.
No, it's been a question all along, it's not my question, it's been brought to you all along.
But what were they thinking to begin with?
Yeah, they didn't have enough of an idea of what to spec out, or what anybody would do when they, when they was putting it out to bid, so that, that, this problem was not in the bid specs. So, I mean, it could be, he just left his grass, that'd be the cheapest thing to do.
You need a motion.
I think whatever gets done, we'll have, if you go to softball game, anything we do, people are gonna ask, well, did you ever think about doing this, this, or this? And that's, that'll be repeated throughout the whole, every bond project that we do. Um, if you wanna spend the money on it, grass, be a motion, if you don't need to tone it, but, because the, to get the turf, they would have to order it, and. They'd have to ship when, are the rest of our tures shipped.
What do they put under that turf? I mean, because with the erosion and the runoff?
Back to my drainage question earlier, I'm looking at that picture you sent me on the phone, and you know, it looks like we're draining everything on the other side of the field and that, but not along where we wanna put it. Or some misunderstanding, you've got the perforated pipe running away from that area.
Yeah, there's like six inches of gravel with perforated pipe that drains down.
I'm saying, when you're running parallel with third baseline is what we're talking about, right?
Right.
So there's no perforated pipe there, if we put turf or even rock there and water comes down that hill, is it gonna just settle against that wall, and we're gonna have to do?
Yeah, it's gonna deteriorate.
It's gonna deteriorate the third baseline wall and the dugout and all that, that's what I was worried about, was.
On that.
Right, so you're talking about uphill of the wall.
Right, coming off the football side down.
Right.
Same thing with if we're gonna put turf down there, and it starts raining or drizzling, and I don't want people to have to, you know, we spent forty thousand dollars to sit on turf. I don't want everyone to be like, well, now I'm soaking wet, I'm sitting in a water hole.
Right, there'll be more drainage in it now, a- after this project. Than there was, than what we, just, whatever drainage, to the extent there is drainage now.
Well, believe it or not, I didn't play softball, so I don't remember what that is out there, but. So, I mean.
Yeah, I would just worry about just that grade and how the. No matter what you put on.
Right.
Cause they're not gonna regrade it.
Right. But, the, the proposal was to strip the sod.
And then?
Put down weed berry, put down rock.
And then put down the turf. The rock underneath the turf will help some.
Yeah, I just, you know, it'd be nice if there was some kind of tile drain or something at the very bottom of that, but.
I'm sure they probably will, I think that's. I would assume.
Yeah.
Unless they put that outside that wall, yeah.
Well, I'll make a motion for a softball, softball field change order, the hillside resurfacing, option two, installation of new turf on the hillside, in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, four hundred dollars.
Scott's the second, all in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. I guess I would have a, a bit of a discussion about the drainage on that.
Yeah, I'll ask for more, more detail about.
I mean, if we could just follow up with them and see if they think it's gonna be concerned, or if we.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Add just a little bit of slope out of there would be.
Yeah, I guess my, my question is that, or my thought is that they. And, and it's new having an engineer on the board, so he asked a question that, so not everybody asked, I sent him. I sent him pictures of the plans, and I should, I need to forward them out to everybody, uh, but the.
I can just see, you have, you have more drainage there, but it has to pool up along third baseline to reach the drainage.
Yeah.
And you're in the middle of a eighth inning, you know, home run derby type thing, and down, downpour, we're waiting hours for that water to get away. So that's where, you know, I'm not that type of engineer by any means, but it'd be nice if we could follow up with them and just make sure we, if there's any kind of mitigation, we could put up against that third baseline to be there.
Yeah. I, I think they, they, they also designed it, I mean, I don't know if the change order would, would the surface of it. Alter as much of how they were receiving the water to flow, so they designed a drainage system based off what they were looking at.
That's my assumption, like Scott said, but I wanna, it'd be nice to follow up.
Yeah, but like, they are getting paid a lot of money, but to get text messages and phone calls from me all during the day, to say, hey, this is what I wanna know now, so, they're, they're good about answering them.
You say they're removing the fence?
So the vision now is the fence that's at the top goes away.
Which is the football field, like.
Yeah, from, from the football stadium, there is, there's a new, the foul area will be different after this is over, the foul area is gonna run the base of the hill. So.
Easy access right to the bathrooms, then.
So you could, you could probably, there could probably be some longer at bats, some kids could be fouling some stuff off. And it's out of bounds, and nobody can make a play on, I don't know if anybody can make a play on the hill, as it was, that would take, be impressive.
We can.
Yeah, we can, I believe in our kids.
All right, moving on, approval of the lawnmower, lower bid, anybody make questions about that?
No, but I'll make a motion to approve the bid award for district lawnmower to NS Implement.
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. Approval of the MO with Big Smiles, Missouri.
I did have a little bit of details to share, cause I talked to, uh, Ms. Belcher today, she's the one that, that brought it to us. And at, at one time, the district had worked with, more with Arthur Center, and so I got a little more context of it on dental work, and. Just like everybody else, staffing is a struggle, especially with dental, dental work, um, and. Not sure that Arthur Center currently with their staffing could help us out in this way, this MOU would not prohibit us from being able to work with Arthur Center, but it would allow us to get. On the Big Smiles calendar, so, you know, their, their model was to, this is their business model, was to travel and do, you know, either Medicaid billing or private insurance. But to get on their calendar, and they wanna know that there's board support, so they would have to get at least twenty-five kids, um, from each building that they would stop at. So parents have to sign off in advance, so parents get, you know, ultimately, parents get to choose if, if they wanted to go, um, use Big Smiles, use, use Arthur Center, but. I'm been hiding from every dentist for several years now, they'll catch up with me, but I understand, for people who do try to get dental care, that it's tough to get in, and. And it's, uh, I think at Arthur Center particularly, it's, it's a little bit of a wait to get in there, so, had a little bit of conversation about, about some of this with, with, uh, Alicia Belcher this afternoon, but.
Where's Big Smiles located at?
They're from Kansas City.
Okay.
So it is.
I mean, there's all, I mean, I mean, did she even talk, did she talk to Dr. Rice or Dr. Stevens or anybody else, so? I mean, what I question is that they want twenty-five kids, and I don't know about wh- what other little kid they want to, but it was hard for my four-and-a-half-year-old to sit there. Without mom being there, so I'm, maybe to be appropriate kids, and I guess that'd be fine, but they also wanna have space, and I know Arthur Center has a dental bus, so. But I mean, like I said, I know that they didn't hire the new dentist, and I know that it's hard, uh, for staff, but you know, I mean, them coming into, from Kansas City. You know, for twenty-five kids when, you know, and I, like I said, I know every place here is full and busy, but I just, I was just hoping that, you know, we made sure that we. Let our people here, cause, you know, local people, I think Dr. Rice's son is, you know, and then Dr. Stevens, and then even Burke City, but.
Yeah, and we didn't work with them this year, um, but it's an opportunity that was presented, and I was bringing it forward.
I just think it's gonna be hard to have a minimum of twenty-five kids, because if you have.
That's on them, though, I mean, that's, we don't have to do anything, it's no charge for the school district or the.
Right, right, but, let's just say you have twenty-five kids, and then you have five that cancel, then those other twenty kids are expecting, or they're expected to, to go and do that, and then they don't show up because. They don't have twenty-five? I mean, so, I mean, I know that they'll be doing all the billing and all that information and stuff like that, so the parents would have to be, you know, make sure that they have all their ducks in a row for that, but.
It says provide a minimum of twenty-five kids per site to be treated, if a minimum is not reached, the visit may be rescheduled or canceled, so maybe, maybe not, maybe they'll show up.
But you have kids that you're expecting to have that done, and then all of a sudden you don't have twenty-five, but.
So is this just, I guess, they won't schedule anything until they have the twenty-five, right? So they would show up that day with, expecting twenty-five, they're not gonna drive from Kansas City, show up to a building, which, you know, we may have to do, like, bus kid. That's my question, are we gonna have to bus kids, cause you, like you're saying, it should be hard to get twenty-five out of using field or twenty-five out of. So you may be looking to bus kids, either maybe this parking lot or, or whatever, but if they're gonna drive all the way down here for twenty-five kids, and two, don't show up, I find it highly unlikely that.
They're not gonna be.
Models to turn around and drive back.
Well, probably.
They may just never show up again, but.
I'd get the insurance ahead of time, I would imagine on a form, and then.
Yeah, they're gonna have to be laid work out.
Oh, yeah, you would have to fill out, yeah, I mean, you have to fill out paperwork, I'm just saying that.
I do agree with trying to keep.
Twenty, trying to have twenty-five, then you have to find space for them. But I, I was just asking, did she sit down and have another conversation with Arthur Center, because they do have a dental bus, plus you.
Yeah.
So.
I agree with Lynetta, I like to see local first, if we can.
Yeah, if I can find out more details, we'll bring you back in, in May, um, we say we didn't, didn't use them this last year, but if, if. We wanted to have the opportunity to provide another option for people to get dental care, at some point, we would have a, wanna have an MOU with them.
Also, the dentist is coming, because I know if they're coming from Kansas City, um, are they gonna, are they students? Or are they, you know, are they, you know, dentists, or are they dental students that's coming to do this care too?
Right. I can find the answer to that, too.
I think they have a dental school, so, yeah.
What's the mission of this, um, dentist, so I, my guess would be it's this dentist that shows up. Do you wanna table that? Is there a motion?
I'll find out more information.
Thank you, thank you. All right, approval, um, do I have a motion for the revisions for the board policy? Katie, do you wanna talk about this a little bit? Or no, it was Amber. It's the pay, uh, the sick pay, the sick leave, then it all goes in one lump sum.
Yeah, so there's two of them there, one of them is for, um, payroll has asked us to change the sick leave, so it kinda hints on two different years, if you're retiring from the school district. You can have up to a hundred and six days paid out to you, right now they have the option of not pay it out all in one lump sum when they retire, or half when they retire. And you would like to change it to just be when they retire.
This is just for budgetary reasons, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so you don't have a.
Yeah.
Carryover.
A payroll check going to somebody, yeah, twenty-twenty-eight, that never worked in twenty-twenty-eight.
Retirement needs that, so. And then the other one that you were coming up to, um, this one is. For vacation, so right now in your sick leave, you can use, um, in quarter hours, but we would like to change vacation right now, it says either a half-day or a full day. And they would like that to be changed, where you can use it at an hour at a time.
I'll make a motion to accept the revisions of board policy GCP, DDA, professional staff short-term leaves.
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero.
Make a, uh, motion to accept the revisions to board policy GD, BDA, support staff leaves.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. Moving on to personnel. Um, is there a motion to approve personnel as listed?
I'll make a motion to approve personnel as listed.
Is there a second?
A second. I abstained due to family member.
Scott abstains, um, all in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries six zero one. The next item is informational, um, only about personnel, there's no actions required. Do I have a motion to approve the probationary contracts?
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six probationary contract, says presented.
Second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. Do I have a motion to approve probationary contracts, there's four of them as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six probation, or professional contracts as presented.
Second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. Do I have a motion to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six certified teaching staff contracts as presented?
Make a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six certified teaching staff contracts as presented.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn it to executive session?
Make a motion to adjourn executive session by a close vote, and close record pursuant to RSMO six one zero dot zero two one, sections two and six.
Second, we have to do roll, roll call for this.
Uh, yes, okay, Scott?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Lynette?
Yes.
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 Motion carries seven zero.